Good evening and welcome to the Carnegie Town Hall. This meeting of the City Planning Commission will begin with a few introductory remarks. The City of Sioux Falls Planning Commission serves as an advisory board to the City Council. It is the responsibility of the Planning Commission to consider and make recommendations on land use and matters. Actions taken tonight on conditional use permits are final unless appealed to the City Council in writing within five days. And any actions taken tonight on final development plans, design review, or minor amendments are final. Any recommendations made on preliminary subdivision plan requests tonight will be referred to the City Council for final action at the third council meeting of this month, or at the first council meeting of next month if associated with a rezoning or major amendment. Any recommendations made on zoning requests, major amendments, future land use amendments, or ordinance amendments tonight will be referred to the City Council for final action at the first council meeting of next month. Council meetings are held at 7:00 PM here in the Carnegie Town Hall. Planning Commission will present a regular agenda in order to place non-conditional items to the Commission's consent agenda. Planning staff in the Commission apply following criteria. First, the request conforms with the Shape Sioux Falls 2035 Comprehensive Plan. Second, planning staff recommends approval of the request. Third, there are no audience members present or written comments received in opposition to the request. And fourth, the application meets all conditions and requirements of the Sioux Falls zoning ordinance. For the regular agenda, the following normal public hearing procedure will be followed for each item. By first requesting planning staff to present a brief report on that item, second, the petitioner or representative will be requested to come forward to make a statement or answer questions. After the petitioner has spoken, anyone from the audience who wishes to address the agenda item shall be recognized. Then, the Planning Commission will discuss the matter further and take appropriate action. We ask that anyone addressing the Planning Commission move to the podium microphone, identify themselves for the record. Please limit your comments to less than five minutes. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, we ask you that you please either turn off or silence your electronic devices. This meeting is being televised on Channel 16 and will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 AM, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, and Wednesday at 1:00 AM. Thank you for your cooperation.
Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission. I'm going to begin by reading the items on the consent agenda. Item number one is approval of the September 7th minutes of the regular meeting. Item number two is Platts. Item number three is a rezone from the RNS2 residential to the I-1 Light Industrial for permitted uses at 216 North Marion Road. Item number four is a major amendment to SubArea B Interstate Crossings Business Plan Development Park District to allow additional permitted uses at 5124 South Solberg Avenue. Item number five is conditional use permit in the C4 Plan Commercial District to allow on sale alcohol and conference center on a site greater than an acre in size at 4,200 West Empire Place. Item number six is a conditional use permit in the I-1 Light Industrial District to allow a recycling processing facility at 6,700 East Rice Street. Item number seven is a conditional use permit in the C2 General Commercial District to allow motor vehicle display and sales at 217 North Minnesota Avenue. Item number eight is a minor amendment to SubAreas A, B, and C, the Avera Plan Development District for a revised master sign plan at 1325 South Cliff Avenue. Item number nine is a final development plan in SubArea E at the Dolly Farm Village Plan Development District to construct a motor vehicle service and retail store at East 18th Street and South Dakota Highway 100. Item number 10 is a final development plan in SubArea C, the Rowling Heights Plan Development District to construct two office buildings at South Prairie Drive and South Remington Place. Are there any objections from any members of the audience to any items on the consent agenda?
Good evening, Madam Chair. My name is Dave Lublin and I'll be representing planning staff tonight. We did receive a request to move item number nine onto the regular agenda so that we can discuss that item.
So item number nine will be the first item discussed on the regular agenda? And there's no objections from the audience? Come forward.
I have a question.
Just come forward, search to the microphone.
Of course. My name is Randy Harkless. I, this is the first time I've been to one of these and I'm wondering what the process is that if I object to one of the consent agenda items, will I be given an opportunity to address that item?
Right now, you're going to say that you want that item moved to the regular agenda?
I would like that item moved to the regular agenda. That would be number six.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh huh. So item number six will move to the regular agenda. Item number nine will move to the regular agenda. Are there any objections from the Planning Commission members to any items listed on the consent? Oh, I'm sorry.
Doug Schaefer's would like number 10 as well to be moved to discuss, further discuss that.
Sure. So six, nine, and 10 are going to be moved to the consent? Or I'm sorry, moved to the regular agenda? Okay. Is there anything left? So Planning Commissioners have no objections to anything left on the consent agenda? Okay. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I make a recommendation to approve the consent agenda, moving items number six, nine, and 10 to the regular agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Is there a motion to approve the regular agenda? With items six, nine, and 10 now being the first items.
Madam Chair, I'd also like to request that we defer items number 11 and 12 for 30 days to their second.
Items six, nine, and 10 are now the first items on the regular agenda. Items number 11 and 12 are now deferred to the November meeting of the Planning Commission. So do I have a motion to approve the regular agenda as stated?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. The regular agenda carries. We'll begin with item number six.
Item number six is a conditional use permit in the I-1 Light Industrial District to allow a metal recycling processing facility. The purpose of the application is to construct and operate that facility at 611 to 6,700 East Rice Street. The area of the site in general is about 25 acres in size, and the Shape Sioux Falls designation is for economic development. In the abutting zoning and land uses, to the north is the I-1 Light Industrial District, which is warehousing and vacant with compatibility rating of four. To the south is the RC Recreation District with Great Bear, and that's a compatibility rating of three. To the east is ag in the county, agriculture in the county. That land use is currently used for agriculture. And then to the west is the I-1 Light Industrial District with warehousing and vacant land uses at the moment. So with potential incompatibility rating, we're going to look for some buffering or some screening to help with some of the compatibility issues. On your conditional use permit standard that you'll be evaluating is for recycling processing facility, that's listed in your staff report, I won't read it verbatim, but essentially you're going to be looking for the operations of the facility to be enclosed in general, and any outdoor storage of recyclable materials must be within opaque screened area at least six feet in height. So as far as the site description, as noted, it was at 6,700 East Rice Street. The existing corridor development plan is a limited access arterial. Proximity to parks, Great Bear Recreation Area lies directly to southwest of the subject property. I want to go right to some of the analysis of the staff report, and to get into that, the subject property along with adjacent property was rezoned from the agricultural district to the I-1 Light Industrial District by the City Council in May of 2011 at the request of Excel Energy, which foresaw the potential for economic and industrial development along East Rice Street. The applicants have worked with city staff on several potential locations for their metal recycling and processing facility, and have determined that the subject property best meets their needs for both truck and rail traffic and for mitigating potential impacts to subject properties. The development is likely to have 15 to 30 semis per day along with 80 to 100 personal passenger vehicles. The applicants are also working with the city to make access improvements to Rice Street that would include deceleration and acceleration lanes. In discussing the proposal with the applicant, the following points have been considered. Item number one is setbacks. All setbacks will be met. Item number two is landscaping and screening. The applicants will utilize a minimum of four-foot-high berm fencing and landscaping to screen the facility from public view, particularly along Rice Street. Item number three, the maximum height for non-habitable structures in the I-1 District is 60 feet high. That's the permitted height. The applicant has stated the crane equipment is less than that and that the scrap piles will remain close to or under 35 feet in height. Item number four, the proposed fence will be eight feet in height with no barbed wire and is proposed to be, and this is part of a clarification of our staff report here, and is proposed to consist of some concrete along Rice Street, which would tie into the proposed buildings and the southwest property line and chain link for other property boundaries, including along Rice Street. And the applicant will be able to describe a little bit more in detail exactly what those fencing plans might be. Item number five, the normal hours of operation are from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM on weekdays and on Saturday mornings, and this could be varied depending on demand. Item number six is the rail line running parallel with East Rice Street will run once per day. The proposed project will not affect the frequency of rail traffic. And item number seven is the closest residential use lies to the north and to the east of the property. Otherwise, all surrounding properties are industrial, agricultural, or municipal, recreation, all and utility. The proposed project was reviewed by the Park Board in late September of 2011 and was unanimously recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. So because of all of that, our staff recommendation is for approval of the conditional use permit with three conditions. The first being final landscaping plans with berm screening and scheduled plans to be submitted to the Planning Office for final approval by the Planning Director and Designee. Item number two is a site management plan will require approval of the Planning and Health Departments prior to the issuance of building permits. And item number three is a minimum height for evergreen coniferous trees used as part of the screening shall be six feet. And that concludes staff report.
Thank you, David. Would there be any questions of David? David, before you sit down, maybe you could help everybody just a little bit and give us some of the history. It seemed like I can remember first dealing with this particular issue back when there was a site that I think the company had chosen out by the airport, and I think, which was denied. I believe right after that, I think your staff in the company kind of went on a search for a site for this particular building. Is that correct?
Yeah. The city and the applicants have been working for several years to try and find a site suitable for their proposed operation. So we've considered a number of sites and ultimately believe that this site is going to be the best site for them with the least amount of impact to surrounding properties.
Thank you, David. Any other questions for David? Anything else? Would the petitioner be here?
Dave Bernstein with TJN in Sioux Falls. And we, I guess, just like to thank you for your consideration and answer any questions. I know we've worked on a couple of different sites trying to find a site that works best for the folks in Sioux Falls and allows us to continue to expand from our five-acre site on the west side of town, which is significantly too small for us. It worked well when we built it 25 years ago, but things have changed and gotten much busier, and the state-of-the-art in scrap facilities has changed significantly. So our goal is to build a state-of-the-art facility at this location if you would issue the permit. We're happy to answer any questions.
Would anyone have any questions for David? David, how long has it been? Approximately two years you've been on this quest to find a?
Hard to remember for sure. We were just discussing that. It's been probably closer to three or four years. We originally looked at the site on North 60th, and then had discussed with Mike's office and worked with Gene Pesca on the Stockyard Site. And when there appeared to be some public sentiment against the Stockyard Site, we've been working with the city for about a year now on trying to find and identify another site, the site being the site. Difficult to find sites that have access to the highways, relatively close to the highways, and also have rail access that are of the proper size. So the number's pretty limited.
When you use the term "state-of-the-art," what are you referring to? You right now are on a site that's roughly about five, five and a half acres?
Actually smaller than, slightly smaller than five acres.
This is going to be 25?
This will be 25, five times bigger. Allows us for proper setbacks, separation of materials and things like that, so we don't have to have things piled right to the fence. Will allow us for a proper flow. If you look at the map there, a proper flow of trucks through the facility where they can enter and drive through a loop and then drive back out. Stormwater management and a lot of things like that that just weren't really done with scrap facilities back 25 years ago when we built the initial facility. Back then, I think you guys will recall that Pitts was also in business at that time downtown, so we were one of two scrap facilities in the area. And also Zabel Steel was selling usable material, which we also do at our current five-acre site. We purchased Zabel Steel and Pitts ultimately was relocated and chose not to reopen, and so we bought a lot of their equipment and absorbed a lot of that business, too. We also operate yards up in Watertown, Aberdeen, Esterville, Yankton, and Worthington, along with our parent companies in Spencer, Iowa and Sioux City. So we move a lot of scrap through this area as it works its way down to the steel mills.
David, what's your timeframe if this were to be approved?
Our timeframe would be, I think, to finalize on the land by the end of the year, if not before, and work on final plans so that hopefully we could break ground in the spring and take advantage of next year's construction season and hopefully be open by the end of next year.
Thank you, David.
Thanks.
I just have one quick question. The maximum height of your piles will be 35 feet.
Yeah.
What is the maximum height on the current site?
It's probably in that range. Our cranes can only reach so high. It may actually be lower than that, and we would be looking at using the same equipment, so it wouldn't be any higher. We have a restriction in being able to reach to the top to pile things that high. Using a hydraulic backhoe, we can only get so high.
I was just trying to get a comparison of?
Sure. Yeah, it would not be any higher.
Thank you, David.
Thanks.
Would there be anyone else here that'd like to speak to this matter? Please step forward and state your name. My name, excuse me, my name is Randy Harkless. I own property at 4701 North Timberline Avenue, which is only half to three-quarters of a mile north of the proposed site. I would ask this commission to consider several, which I consider significant issues with this proposal. Because most of the traffic will be coming in off of I-90, if it comes from the east or the west or the north, it will come in on I-90, they'll turn on Timberline Avenue, go south on Timberline Avenue, stop at Rice Street, make a right-hand turn, and then they will, you know, proceed to the TJN facility. Traffic study in 2007 indicated that there were approximately 3,400 cars a day that used Timberline Avenue between 60th Street North and Rice Street. Mr. Bernstein has indicated both publicly and here tonight that there will probably be two to 250 trucks, trailers, things of that, pickups, that hauling scrap metal and iron into this facility. And if you do the math, there are, excuse me, about a potential, and this sounds significant, but there's about 680,000 potential interactions per day if you have 200 trucks a day and 3,400 cars. That translates, if you do the math, into about three and a half million a week, and if you translate that into a month, it approaches 13 million potential interactions. My concern is this traffic flow. My concern is the potential issue with the traffic. There's also a rail crossing at Rice, on Timberline, and I have, I know that that crossing gets rough, and it, a trailer drives across it, a truck drives across it, it bounces. And I have been at the TJN facility out on 12th Street, and most of the loads that come in are not self-contained and they're not tarp. And there's a potential that a portion of that load will shift and fall off. My concern is the traveling public, the 3,400, then has to be worried about pipes, has to be worried about nails, has to be worried about sharp objects that could potentially fall off of these loads. The other thing is that today there is no turning lane off of Rice Street, so all of this traffic will be making a left-hand turn from Rice Street into this facility. And I know there was mention tonight about a potential turning lane, but I have not seen any plans that indicates that that's going to happen. Again, my concern is not necessarily the potential actions that will surely occur with 13 million potential interactions on a monthly basis, but it's the traveling public's 3,400, those 3,400 people that have to be concerned about flat tires and alignment of their car because they're driving over debris that will inevitably fall off. I've spoken with several people who live and work in the area where TJN is now located. They talk at great length about flat tires, about running over pipe. I talked to a guy who said he was stopped next to the TJN facility. Some guy pulled up with a trailer, had tin on it, and the whole works fell off. Those are the kinds of issues that we're going to have. I would ask that you consider that. The other thing that I want to bring up is the, what I consider significant environmental issues with this particular location. There was a study in 2000 and 2002 that indicated that there was an animal that's on the South Dakota Endangered Species List, that this particular location is their habitat. As a matter of fact, not only in Cactus Heights, which is just to the east of this particular location, but further to the west towards Great Bear, this particular animal was discovered. So this is the habitat. Now, it's a snake, you know, whether you believe that snakes ought to be protected or not, the reality is that South Dakota has chosen to include this animal on its endangered species list. The state doesn't allow protection, much protection. The state only says that you have to have a permit if you want to capture one of these animals. But the thing that I'd like to point out is that as South Dakota 100, which is in that, which will be in that area, the original alignment was shifted significantly to the east. And the reason it was shifted was because of the habitat of this endangered species. So this commission doesn't necessarily have to consider the legal ramifications of this endangered species, but obviously the moral obligations. You are chartered to, I hope, comply with Shape Sioux Falls 2035. I would point out Article number nine says, "Shape Resources. Environmental Stewardship Plan. The overall intent: conserve and protect the important environmental, human, and economic resources through sustainable practices. Strategy: protect the environment through the identification of resources, protection through land use ordinances, and land purchases, and develop other sustainable implementation And finally, one other issue that I'd like to point out is that there is a city ordinance currently on the books, Appendix C. It's called, it's the Revised Ordances of the City of Sioux Falls. Appendix C says, "Comprehensive Extraterritorial Zoning Regulations for Minnehaha County and the City of Sioux Falls." I would point out Article number 14 created what they call a Water Source Protection Overlay District. I have a map that I received from the City Planning Office, which I have a copy of, that clearly indicates that this particular land is in that Water Source Protection District. I would also point out that part of Article 14 says, "The Water Source Protection Overlay District is an overlay whose boundaries are superimposed on all districts established by this ordinance. It is not intended that these regulations interfere with, abrogate, or annul any other rules or regulations of this ordinance, except that if the Water Source Protection Overlay District imposes a greater restriction than the underlying zone district regulations they shall control." I would point out also in this particular city ordinance, Article 14A dot 05, where it says prohibited uses, "The following uses shall not be allowed in the Water Source Protection Overlay District." Item number I, Junk or Salvage Yards. This ordinance went even one step further and identified and provided definitions of what a junk or salvage yard is. Article 24 of this city ordinance says definitions, 24 dot 02, salvage or junk yard, which they reference as a prohibited use. It says, "An open area where waste or scrap materials are bought, sold, exchanged, stored, baled, packed, disassembled, handled, including but not limited to scrap iron and other metals." And so I would ask that you consider the fact that it would appear that this particular application violates the city ordinance, and that I hope that you will consider that in your review. One of the imparting, I would like to say that I hope that you consider these issues in their total, in their totality, in that we, you know, have an opportunity to prevent what I consider a misuse of this particular land and this property because of the traffic issues, because of the environmental issues, and specifically because it would appear that it violates the city ordinance. I wish David Bernstein and TJN well. I hope they can find an appropriate location to expand their business. He has said on many occasions that their requirement is that they have to have rail access and they have to have access to an oil road. As you know, there are three main lines, rail lines, coming into the city of Sioux Falls, one coming from the north, one coming from the south, and one coming from the east. I would suggest that there, in that area, there is an appropriate place for this particular business. And again, I wish them well. This particular location, for all of these reasons that I've discussed, would appear to me to not be an appropriate location. Does anyone have any questions? Anyone have any questions for Randy?
Yeah, I'd like to have you explain or define what an interaction is, your choice of words, and how you came up with those numbers again.
Of course. An interaction would be that there is a pickup truck with a trailer with scrap metal on it, driving down Timberline Avenue, and drops something off. The interaction would be those 3,400 cars that are either following that pickup that drops that scrap metal off inadvertently or is passing them. That's the interaction that I'm talking about. The math is, works out that if there are 3,400 cars a day and there are 200 trucks, trailers, whatever vehicles hauling this, you multiply one by the other, that's the potential interactions, because any one of the 200 trucks or trailers could drop something off, and any one of the 3,400 cars could drive over the top of it. So that's the daily. You multiply that times five and you'll get a weekly number. You multiply that times four and you can get a monthly number. That's where the 13 to 14 million potential interactions could occur.
I got it. Go ahead.
The question on that is that 3,400, that's over a 24-hour period?
That's over a 24-hour period. That's correct.
Okay, so now you're talking, this is only operating from 7:00 to 5:00. You've narrowed that down. You don't have that many interactions.
I fully, yeah, I fully and completely understand what you're saying, but if a trailer runs over the railroad crossing and drops off a bucket of nails at 2:00 in the afternoon, then those 3,400 cars have 24 hours to run over that bucket of nails, which could happen. So it's not so much that I'm concerned about the nails dropping off and me running over them as soon as they drop off. My concern is that they drop off and they lay there, because there is no, I see nothing in this proposal that would prevent that or require cleanup or require a policing. And again, I have been at TJN. And again, I have been at TJN Enterprises, and I know that those loads come in and they're not self-contained and they're not tarped. So the potential of, of that load shifting and a portion of it falling off is very prevalent. Could very, and very easily happen, and as a matter of fact, it happens today, basically because of the, you know, one of the incidents I talked to you about, that this load of tin just fell out on the street. Because I, so I know that's going to happen. Yes?
No.
Okay. Anyone else have questions?
Any other questions for Randy? Randy, when you say you live on North Timberline?
4701 North Timberline, yes. I, I own property there. It's a residence. I currently live in town. Our intention in the past has been to, to move out into that area, but today my son lives there.
Okay. And that, and those buildings are how far off of East Rice Street there? Is it an acreage?
Probably a half, yeah. It's 20, it's 23 acres up there that I own. It's about, oh, half to three-quarters of a mile north of the intersection of Rice Street and Timberline.
Thank you. Any other questions for Randy? If not, thank you. Very nice presentation, Randy.
All right, thank you.
Would there be anyone else here this evening that'd like to discuss this matter? If not, uh...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a question of the staff. How do you respond to his contention that we're being violated by the city ordinance? I assume that you researched all of this.
Yes, we did. You know, it's not a junkyard and it's not a scrapyard. It's a recycling processing facility. So those definitions are clearly defined in our zoning ordinance. And so the difference, the main difference being is that the recycling is occurring on-site and, and, and being disseminated. There is no disassembly necessarily on-site as you would find in a scrap or junkyard. So that's the primary difference. And the Water Source Protection District is reviewed both by, well, by three staff, planning, building services, and water rec staff. I'll take a look at every application that's within the Water Source Protection District to ensure that there are no major areas of concern to allow that to continue forward. So, and, you know, that's what that district is in place for.
So if you're considered opinion that the definition of business that they're trying to give this piece of property to their little location falls within the correctness of the definition, is not in violation of the...
That's correct.
And you also said that the water protection has reviewed this plan already?
Water, everybody gets a chance to review in internal agency review process during our review of the applications, and so everybody's been made aware of it. Upon building permit, they need to fill out a Water Source Protection District Form, and then that will go to the various departments that need to review it. And so that's where any, any other outstanding issues that would be of concern would need to be mitigated.
Okay. David, I don't know if somebody else have a question? Soil contamination, that is regulated and done by the state if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct. Yep, that's correct. I mean, you know, clearly the applicant is going to need to be aware and comply with all applicable state and federal environmental protection regulations too, as part of the processing of the site, so.
Had you had a chance to visit with Randy prior to tonight? Had he...
No, he had not contacted our office before this evening.
Okay. Thank you. If there is no further discussion on... What, Randy?
I would respond to...
Real briefly.
Real briefly.
Real briefly.
I would suggest that you get the city attorney to review this city ordinance because if we're trying to parse the words and say that this is a metal recycling operation, it is not a junk or salvage yard. The ordinance is very clear in its definition, and it, I will respond one more time to the definition. Open area where waste or scrap mails are bought, sold, exchanged, stored. We've got a 35-foot pile of iron that we've already know that's going to be there, and it says it includes but not limited to scrap iron and other metals. I would suggest that the city planning department review their own city ordinance and get their legal counsel to help them understand what that means.
Randy, I suspect that'll probably end up happening. What we're going to vote on tonight is the land usage. Is this a, the right spot for something like that? Questions like that, I'm sure, will kind of run its course as far as, I'm sure we can be pretty well expect, no matter what happens, that'll be looked at, I think, by the city attorney. What action we take tonight, you certainly have the opportunity to go to city council with, either party can. And I'm sure there'd be a lot of research done to answer some of that, Randy. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve item number six. Would there be a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Does anyone feel that we, some of the issues, did I say that incorrectly to Randy this evening about no matter how the vote goes, I think we can expect some of the issues he brought up to be looked at by staff as far as legal would be concerned?
That is my understanding of what staff said, is that those, upon application, those things will all...
Okay. There be no further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Number six passes. I would welcome Jesse Beck for the chair.
We'll allow you a couple minutes to clear more. Look at item number nine.
Item number nine, thank you, Madam Chair, is a final development plan in subarea E of the Dolly Farm Village Plan Development District to allow development of a retail store and motor vehicle service facility. The general location of this facility is at the southwest corner of East 18th Street and South Dakota Highway 100. The area in size is 1.51 acres. Existing land use is vacant, and the SHAPE Sioux Falls designation for this area is a regional employment center. The budding zoning and land use is to the north is the subarea F, which is developing retail. To the south is subarea A, which is a developing retail office area. To the east is rural residential across Highway 100, which is residential in Minnehaha County. And to the west is subarea E of the Dolly Farm Village. We have indicated that the compatibility rating three against the rural, against the rural residential across the highway. So the applicant is aware of the need to mitigate some of the impacts by buffering and screening. The zoning of this site, the Dolly Farm Village Plan Development District was created by city council action in June of 2006 to allow for multi-use development west of South Dakota Highway 100. A major amendment was approved involving the subject property in September of 2009 to allow C4 commercial district land uses in subarea E, which had previously been for O office land uses. And this is the first project that you're considering within that subarea. The applicable regulations and standards have been noted in your staff reports. So I'll get right to some of the final development plan details. As I noted, the location is at the southwest corner of East 18th Street and South Dakota Highway 100. Access to the site will be taken from the west side of the property off of East 18th Street. There are no parks, open space for schools within 600 feet. 51 parking stalls have been provided on-site. As far as the landscaping plan, the applicants have shown a landscape plan that incorporates trees surrounding the lot. Trees are not required on the west side of the lot and may account for some of the required trees along the north and east frontages. Site plan showed nine trees total, which is short of the required placement at a rate of one tree per 50 feet. And, but Dolly Farm Village regulations allow for some off-site placement of the landscaping requirements, but where that placement may be has not been determined. In addition, the applicant should take care to consider screening of the service bay doors along the east side of the property from residential development across the highway. Tree plantings or other methods of screening should be considered. The final landscape plan should be submitted for approval by the planning office prior to issuance of a building permit. I want to note on that in particular, that is something that has been done in the past as these projects have come forward, is where the final landscape plans have been allowed by the planning commission to be approved and looked at by planning and zoning staff as the, as the applicant has come forward for a building permit. So the southwest corner of the East 18th Street and South Dakota 100 intersection was determined to be an appropriate location for commercial uses upon completion of the major amendment in 2009. Major intersections, intersections within regional employment centers can utilize commercial and retail development. A neighborhood meeting was held on Monday, September 26th, and the applicant should be prepared to address the outcome of that meeting at the public hearing. Because the subject application meets the intent of the subarea regulations and is an allowed use as defined by the subarea, staff is recommending approval of the final development plan with one condition, and that is a final landscape plan showing screening and required tree plantings or off-site placement shall be provided to the planning office for approval prior to the issuance of a building permit. We have obviously received some comments from the public on this one, which is why we pulled it from the consent agenda, and he is here to speak to you this evening. Otherwise, that concludes staff report.
Thank you. Any questions, Dave?
David, when I read through some of this, it talks about an architectural review that's done on this property.
Yep.
I have heard about that before. You've explained it before, but could you just give us a brief, what is that?
When the property owners decided to develop the property initially, they incorporate, one of the things that they wanted to incorporate was an architectural review committee to make sure that all of these land uses that were coming in were going to conform with their vision of the site. And so they set up an architectural review committee within the subarea regulations. And part of what that requirement is then, is that before they can receive planning commission approval on a final development plan, they need to have gone through the review process by the architectural review committee, and then in a letter sent to our office that gives that approval to proceed. And just to note too, we have received that letter, and we received it as of Monday or Tuesday evening.
And that happens with all development done on this particular site?
That's correct.
Any, does that include a landscaping scheme, or is that, once again, left up to your office?
It can. In this case, the architectural review committee reviewed the architecture of the building and is comfortable letting our office review the screening and the landscaping.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that explanation.
Any other questions, Dave? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is the petitioner here, please?
Good evening. I'm Dick Dempster with Architecture Incorporated. And a couple of things that Dave wanted us to address, first of all, landscaping. If you've driven by the property, South Dakota 100 has a median that goes between the two lanes of the road or the highway that goes north and the two lanes that go south. Landscaped with grasses, perennial plants, very attractive for a highway. Within the Dolly Farm Village, at both entrances, actually all three entrances, there's very attractive landscaping, again, with grasses, trees, and perennial plants. It's that character that the landscaping will be around this property. In addition, and the rendering that Steve showed, shows a fence with some brick pilasters that's picking up on some of the fencing that was used at Harvey Dunn's school. So as, as far as landscaping and screening, although not fully developed at this point, that's the concept, and that's the way it will be when it's submitted. So we're comfortable with the stipulation. As far as the public meeting, we held that at Rosa Parks School on Monday, September I have the application to the school district, and of course, they have to give you permission to use the school and that sort of thing. A week or so prior to that, working with the GIS department, I asked for addresses of people within 2,000 feet of the property so that we could send postcards to each of those people explaining that we were having a public meeting, that this is something that will be taken up by the planning commission tonight, and that it had to do with Graham Tire Store on the corner. So the, within 2,000 feet, we have about 120 names, so we sent out 120 postcards. The evening of the meeting, we had about six people come. And we had this drawing, which again was on the postcard, and then the site plan drawing. And then as well as, besides that, we had other developments that are happening within the Dolly Farm Village. But specifically to this project, there were a couple of questions. One person wanted to know if there were going to be tires stacked outside the building. And I explained that the, this, this particular building, there's going to be a room that's about 30 by 60. So all tires will be inside the building. There won't be any used tires at all on the outside. As far as occasional sales, I thought there might be. Dave has since told me that in a C4, there's no outside display of tires. So I was in error when I told the person at the public meeting that, that that may occasionally happen. It's not permitted. It won't happen. The second question we received that night was whether this type of use is permitted by, by the current zoning. The answer is yes. What we're doing tonight is a final development plan. The project is permitted, and a final development plan is to show that this project complies with current zoning regulations. We're not changing any zoning. Those were basically the two questions that, that we fielded that night. And we were there at, at Rosa Parks for maybe an hour and a half, something like that. I don't think we missed anybody. But, and I think that, unless you have any questions, that, that wraps up the input from the petitioner.
Any questions, Dave?
Dick...
Or Dick, excuse me, I'm sorry. Looking at Dave.
Yes. Dick, will you be reviewing the landscaping plan then with the city in regards to this project?
Certainly. Yep. It'll follow the concept that I outlined.
All right. Thank you.
Dick, my question is, this Dolly Farm Village project has been developing out over several years.
Yes.
And it had a lot of neighborhood input from the very beginning, both neighbors to the east and the west of the project. So when it, my, I guess my question, or maybe my concern is, is that we, you may have met the required obligation of 2,000 feet to send to, but I think because it has an incompatibility rating of three next to the neighborhood, and because the neighborhood was so involved with it, I'm a little concerned that you didn't reach further to all the neighbors in Split Rock, in the split, or the, yeah, is that right? Split Rock addition? Or a little bit further to the neighborhood beyond Rosa Parks? Because you've been, you were at the meetings, the same meetings that I was at, and there's several dozen neighbors supporting you in this effort for Dolly Farm. And I think maybe a greater effort should have been made to reach out beyond that 2,000 feet boundary.
Obviously, there are zoning signs that are also posted on the site. So it's, I think typically you reach out 300 feet. I probably should have said 5,000 or something, but I just arbitrarily said 2,000. Next time, we'll go farther.
Would be my concern.
Okay.
Any other questions of Dick? Any other questions of Dick? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else here to speak on this item? Come forward, please. Mr. Gallo, you've been before several times.
Ah, you recall. Good evening. And I must say, for those that don't know me, my name's Kevin Gallo, and I am a resident of Split Rock Heights subdivision. And let me say first, I really appreciate your comments. I've been a resident in that area for over 12 years, and have been actively involved and a supporter of many of the development plans that have gone into Dolly Farm. I was not invited to that meeting, and I spoke to over six people just in my immediate vicinity about this, and I want to express some of our concerns this evening. For those of you that aren't familiar with this, it started, I don't know if it was referenced, back in about 2002. And back then, we all received postcards similar to the one in the lower right corner informing us about this wonderful Dolly Farm Village plan for the area to the east of Split Rock Heights, which is circled on this, this particular slide. And again, generally, we've been favorable with the plans for development in the Dolly Farm Village. In some of the literature put out about the area, concept was high-quality development, which, that will help the east side of Sioux Falls grow in a controlled way. The next one, please. Fit in with the area and the neighbors in an integrated and harmonious manner. These are the words of the development team, not ours, but we were very glad to see them. Again, 2002, the switch was from primarily what was designated in that area of, as rural residential, to some commercial with additional office, institutional, and residential to the south of Eighteenth Street. The next one. Here's the figure from 2005 on the left, 2009 on the right, and. Right about in the center, are you going to be able to show it? I just want to indicate right there. Great, thank you. At that time, Split Rock is the road coming out of the existing rural residential, right there, perfect. And at that time, to the west side was what was determined to be office and institutional. That's what we had agreed to in one of the many rounds of the developers coming in to you and the city council and asking, can we have more commercial? Can we have more office? We, you know, there were exchanges made, and we were sympathetic and said, okay, you know, you do this, you put a pond in here, that's fine, you do this, we'll let you do this. So, that was 2009. In the, in the time since then, as David referred to, that area was also put into commercial. And at that time, the residents of our area were told that there may be a tire store, and I've got two people that remembered that, but that it would be off of South Dakota 100, further back in the development, not adjacent to South Dakota 100. The current plans for establishment of a motor vehicle service and retail store on the corner of Eighteenth and South Dakota 100 would seem directly contrary to us, to the characteristics the neighborhood was led to believe would be displayed by Dolly Farm Village. While we're not opposed to the inclusion of this store in the Dolly Farm Village, we are concerned about the location right along South Dakota 100 and the corner of Eighteenth Street, directly across from, let's, just go ahead, directly across from our residential area. This is the east view facing Split Rock Heights. The visuals submitted to the planning department indicate that the garage doors of the proposed store will be facing east towards our neighborhood and visible from South Dakota 100. While it's true that there is a nice median on South Dakota 100 with grasses and some other things, the median's not visible, let's just go ahead to the next one, the median's not visible when you enter and exit our primary intersection and entrance to and from our development. This, what, what, what we've superimposed over there on the left side of the figure is what we were told we would expect at this intersection. That happens to be a bank that's actually located further down South Dakota 100 at the intersection of 26th Street and South Dakota 100. This is what is now proposed at this intersection, and, you know, we're facing the possibility that the residents, those of us that come in and out of our development, as well as visitors to our development, that maybe someday would be looking to relocate in our area and would see this as they enter and exit, excuse me, our, our area, we're seriously concerned about the placement of this particular retail store at this location within Dolly Farm. Possibly if it was angled, additionally, it might be a better appearance as well as landscaping, but those are things that have not been proposed. Okay. The neighborhood comments I received, and again, I spoke to about a dozen neighbors, we were, we were told a bank would be located at that corner. You're kidding? And these three words, I've got to emphasize how they did. What? Where? Why? And then, and then the amazement was that there'd be this view of garage doors right across from this great monument sign advertising the shops at Dolly Farm. It just amazed some of our residents that it would even be considered to put a tire store right across from, you know, the other things that they've done to make it harmonious with the neighborhood.
Mr. Gallo, I need you to get your comments moving.
Last slide. Oh, second to last slide. As David mentioned, and as you referred to, there's a level three potential incompatibility because of the residential area to the east, and the recommendation that a final landscape plan, which to date is not available, recommended additional landscaping. Again, we're not opposed to having that particular structure within Dolly Farm Village. We are concerned about the proposed location right along South Dakota 100 in view of the neighborhood, as well as visitors to the neighborhood coming in and out of that intersection. What we would like to request is that this item be deferred until the detailed landscaping, minimally, that it be deferred until the landscaping plan is submitted to the planning office, and that it can be reviewed not only by the planning office, but additional residents of the neighborhood, rather than just those within 2,000 feet of that planned development. We'd also like to request that if the petitioner, if you feel that that's appropriate in that location, and we hope you don't, that you at least require them to angle it additionally so that the front view is more towards what our residents will view as they exit. The schematic they showed where there's this nice angled view, that's actually what you would see if you're on the west side of the intersection, rather than on the residential side of the intersection. So, again, we're asking that it be deferred until residents can review these, these items, rather than just the planning office.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions on Mr. Gallo? Thank you, Kevin. Is there anybody else here to speak on this item?
Good evening. Craig Lloyd, Lloyd Companies, 3130 West 57th Street, Suite 112. You know, we've been here a lot. We've talked to a lot of people. Last year, I was part of a group that set up the new requirements and posting for the area that you need to send out the letters and to post the signs on each site. Spent about two, three months doing that. The most I ever heard was 600 feet to send out letters. We've always thought we went overboard when we went to 2,000 feet. Now, 2,000 feet is just about a half a mile. And that's like being from right here to about 14th Street away from the site. And I think we've gone overboard in a lot of different ways. We set up an architectural committee to review not only the plans that the developers are setting, giving us, but we have a Dick Dempster review for color, texture, everything that goes into that building. I don't know any other development in Sioux Falls that's gone through that. I don't care if you're at the Empire Mall, the Western Mall, any side street, any strip mall, Meadows on the River, we've never gone out 2,000 feet. We've never had an independent architect review each individual plan. We try to be really sensitive to the things that Mr. Gallo talked about. When we started this project back in about 2005, almost everything out there was spoken for on the north side of Eighteenth Street. And we had no problems. People were standing in line to do it. And then there's this thing called a recession came along. One person stepped up to the table, and that was Target. A few months later, Kohl stepped up to the table. But everybody else either went bankrupt or is no longer in this area of South Dakota. I feel like we've done a great job on bringing retail to the east side, a lot of things that people require. We talked to a number of people all the time, and they compliment us in what we've done out there, from the theaters to the Target, to the Kohls, to the strip mall that we just finished inside, got a restaurant going out there, and had great response. Response to some of the arc, the landscaping, I don't know if you've been out there, but there's a 20-foot berm that would go about from the building to the north, south there on the other side of the street. That was built for two reasons. Number one, it wasn't supposed to be that high because of the sound, but the neighbors wanted a higher and higher berm, so we built a higher berm. You know what the biggest complaint we have for that area now? The berm's too high. And so, you don't see all the things that Mr. Gallo was telling you. His description or projection of where the building sits has it right out onto the street. That's not true. It's almost 80 feet back from the beginning of that Eighteenth Street. And that's with the front part where the offices are. The garage doors aren't even close to there. We want to do the right thing for not only that, but for the whole area. But I think we're being held to standards that nobody else has been held to. And I think for a, if you want to call a tire store or a retail store, there's a lot of things that we've tried to put and get the Graham Tire Company to go along with. And it's, it's pretty much what we predicted, to make it look like a bank from the front as best we can, because we are conscious about that. And we always had a tire store out there for, since 2009, and that's what we went through. We also had a convenience store going behind it. That's not going to happen. So, I ask you to give us some breaks and just let us design the landscape. I don't think there's many places in this town that landscape like that, from the roadways to the trees, to the bushes, to the flowers that we plant out there. I don't think you'll find any. And I think if we, if anything, we should have performed over and above what you ever imagined that would be. And I just ask that we just continue on. We'll communicate with Mr. Gallo. I don't know why he didn't get his card, but I got a card today, nailed on the 22nd of the month, and I just got it today. So, I think he's about 1,300 feet around from our place, and so, he should have got a card. But I can't help the post office. Thank you.
Any questions for Craig?
Mr. Lloyd, Dave, can you go, or Steve, can you go back to the landscaping one, please? I've been by there quite a number of times. What you're saying is, is down at the bottom where it says South Dakota Highway 100, kind of off on the right-hand side, that berm there is 20.
Not on that side of the road, on the.
On the east side.
Okay. Because that's, was to protect the neighborhood from sound and looking out onto this.
Okay.
Anybody else from the audience here to speak on this item tonight? None? I'll look for commission action.
Madam Chair, I'm here for approval.
We have a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Just, is that the approval with that one condition?
Yes.
Then I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of item number nine. Any discussion?
I sympathize with Mr. Gallo on the look of it, but I think that the plan that Planning Commission or the planning staff will look at will certainly help in that regard.
With regard to the landscaping?
With regard to the landscaping, yes. So, I'm comfortable with that being a condition of this application.
Any other comments? No? All those in favor of approving item number nine signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, same sign. Item number nine carries. Item number 10 has also been moved to the regular agenda. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Steve Randall. I'll be representing planning staff on this and other items this evening. Item 10 is a final development plan application. It's for a project located at Remington Place. There are office buildings that are located on a remaining lot that's included in a planned development of office buildings. And staff has identified the adjacent properties in the Rolling Heights Planned Development District as being residential to the north, and assigned a compatibility rating of four, simply because it is residential. To the south, there is vacant land, future commercial. To the east, there is office development. And to the west, again, residential development that would be, have a compatibility rating of four, which means that the proposed project is generally compatible with the adjacent properties. However, we look for traffic from a higher density use to be directed away from those residential uses. And building elements and scale should be consistent with surrounding proposed and existing development. So, we're looking for architectural treatment, landscaping, and so on in our final development plan that would be compatible with not only the existing office buildings in the planned development district, but also the residential properties adjacent to the project. This planned development district was approved by the city council in 1992 for single-family and multifamily development, and then there was a major amendment to allow the office uses at the location that we're looking at. I've included in your staff report the Sub Area C regulations in the planned development district that would guide development of the subject property, including parking regulations, sign regulations, density, other regulations, and so on. One of the more important ones is a buffer be established to the north against existing residential development that would include a berm and evergreen trees. That buffer is in place and growing, and will be maintained by the developer throughout the project. A master landscaping plan was approved at the time of the first final development plan application by the planning director. Vehicular site access is controlled. Vehicular access to the site from Southwestern Avenue is via two approaches located across Dunbar Court. Vehicular access will be through a shared access between Sub Area G and C that exits onto Grand Prairie Drive and Southwestern Avenue. Vehicular access. Vehicular access will be from Grand Prairie Drive across from the entrance to the Jade Prairie. Our project is located north of West 69th Street and west of southwestern avenue. The corridor development on 69th is addressed with access points for those properties. This has limited access and therefore controlled access via private drive. Shared access to South Remington Place, public sidewalks are shown on both streets with sidewalk connections to the building entrances. No transit routes are located within a quarter mile. And there are no proximities to consider with respect to schools, parks, playgrounds. The property is irregular in shape, and the developer has proposed locating two office buildings on the property and then subdividing the property after development in order to come up with two office properties with shared parking. It's a creative and efficient way to develop the property, and we encourage that in these planned unit developments. The application materials submitted do meet the requirements for a complete application. The building B on Lot 1 is located on the south half of the lot, is 4,296 square foot on one level, and shares the parking lot with pedestrian access to a north side building entrance. Building design is indicated as brick walls with stucco fascia and pitch drift with shingles. A similar building, Building A on Lot 2, is located on the south half of the lot, is 5,570 square feet on one level and shares the same parking lot with pedestrian access to a south side building entrance. And building design is similar. Brick walls with stucco fascia and a pitch drift with shingles. The landscaping plan shows a three-foot-high irrigated earthen berm with eight-foot evergreens planted on top of a berm 25-foot on center, which is in place as required by subarea regulations along the north property line of Lot 2. A total of nine trees are required to be planted on the site based on the parking provided, and 15 seedless honey locust trees are planted in the front yards along South Prairie Drive and South Remington Place as required. Six maple trees are planted to the interior of the subject property in addition to the required tree plantings. There are no freestanding signs proposed on the plan. Building wall signs are noted but also not shown on the plan. They will have to conform to the subarea regulations for sign, location, and placement and size. Lighting, site lighting is noted on the plan as 25-foot-high shoebox-style fixtures as required by city ordinance. They're not shown on the plan, but a photometric plan conforming to the city lighting ordinance for the site will be required in order to obtain a building permit. A shared trash enclosure is located on Lot 2 with six-foot-high stucco walls to match a building wall material. The only comments from agency review had to do pretty much with water and domestic water service. Sanitary sewer, there is a cost recovery due. The proposed use is an allowed use in the PD and conforms to the Shakes Sioux Falls 2035 Comprehensive Plan, which designates the intersection of West 69th and southwestern as a neighborhood employment center. The application is an appropriate land use and development proposal for the subject property, and staff is recommending approval with one condition for approval, that is that signage be per the approved master sign plan, which was approved some time ago. That would limit the signage that's allowed on the property. We did have a, staff did have a call from an adjacent property owner asking, and they did stop into the office and pick up plans to look at, and I don't know if that was the person that is here this evening requesting discussion of the item. But that concludes staff report.
Thank you. Any questions to Steve? No? Thank you, Steve. Is the petitioner here, please? We need to hear from the petitioner first, which is Mr. Van Buskerk.
Hello, Chad Van Buskerk, 5800 South Remington Place, resident of Sioux Falls, and here to answer your questions if need be. Generally, I think as staff review pointed out, we've met or exceeded all the requirements of the planned development and trying to carry through the theme that we've put in place on the rest of that street. This is actually some of the last development going on in that subdivision there, so Office Park. And generally good comments throughout from neighbors and whatnot, so I'm curious to see comments from our neighbors. And any questions, I'll confield now.
Any questions to Chad?
Chad, you had a neighborhood meeting, I think, Stephen said?
On this one, actually, we did not. We put up the posting signs. We did repetitive ones throughout as we marched down the street. You can kind of see from the area map that we've basically worked from east to west. And we have a veterinary clinic in there, a dental clinic in there, other miscellaneous office uses down the way. And then the neighborhood design is very congruent throughout there. We've kept the same architect on a lot of those buildings and just didn't feel it was necessary this time. And it's a high-traffic corner, too, so we expected it to be seen. We did have a visit from one of our neighbors who regularly attended those meetings prior and took care of his, our office is right there across the street, as it turns out. So we feel like we've been very accessible and, again, lived up to all the requirements of the PD that were put in place to begin with. So didn't feel it was necessary this time, so I do apologize for that.
Thank you, Chad.
Any other personal questions? Thank you, Chad. Come on, Floyd, sir. State your name for the record, please.
Doug Schaffers. We live at 5812 South Grand Prairie Drive. We're residents just directly north of the retaining pond and building number A there. Couple of issues that we would like to address. The plan does not really address the ground elevation. I have a couple of pictures here from the previous building that was put in. The berm is not... The berm that was installed is three-foot-high, it's got trees. But the ground elevation of the Smiles Dentistry Office is actually about six-foot higher now than the berm. And we were told previously before they built the building that it was going to be the same elevation. We weren't going to raise it. It's actually going to be lowered. And as you can see, this is a picture from my deck. There's our six-foot evergreen trees, and we have dental people looking at our house every day and watching our activities, you know? If we sit out on the deck, we're watching people get their teeth cleaned. Their building right of that, and I expect that we're going to have some problems with the retention pond. That ground being higher than the berm, if that pond overflows, it's going to overflow into my yard. And the other thing that I'm concerned about is the berm. Berm is intended to provide screening between residential and commercial. And obviously here, they are much higher than the berm, and it's not really effective anymore in that situation. You know, the landscaping that they have put in, you know, the trees are there. They're probably about six-foot tall now. They've been in about three years. It's probably going to be another 10, 15 years before those evergreen trees will be effective in providing any type of screening. What I would propose is that the elevation be reviewed, and that's the ground elevation, and that somehow in the plan that there's overflow to allow drainage away from that building, from that pond, without overflowing into my property, and also a landscaping plan that specifically addresses trees behind their building between our property and their building, either around the pond, along the berm, or wherever it may be. I guess what I'm asking is a further elevation plan and a landscaping plan to address those issues.
Thank you. Any questions?
Just out of curiosity, when did you build your house?
We built in 2009, or no, 2007. We were actually there before the berm was put in, but we were told when we bought the property that the berm was going in. The elevation of the land at that time was the same level as my land. And over the last three or four years, they've built up the land, and it's probably 10 feet higher now than what it was when I built our house. And I'm concerned as far as the parking lot, I don't know how they're, if it's a level parking lot, or if it's sloped, you know, that street, Remington Place, where the east entrance is to that parking lot is probably 10 feet higher than Grand Prairie. So I'm not sure what they're planning to do, if they're going to raise the entire development to, you know, make it level. I guess I don't see that on the plan to tell me what's taking place there. So I'm concerned, you know, for my sake, as far as my property there, that we don't get the overflow and that the proper landscaping and the berm is not effective today.
Any additional questions? Dave, can you go back to the overhead site plan again? I have the pictures up still.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep, that was, no. So this gentleman's property, can you just point out where your house is, sir, on this?
We have loans over there, yes.
Okay.
There are other houses now. There's only one open lot now to the east of us, and there is also a house that would be directly west of the property that is built, further south. Yep, right in that area. There's two other open lots yet to the west at this point yet.
Sure. Anybody else from the audience here to speak on this item? Okay. Seeing none, I'll look for commission action on item number 10.
Madam Chair, would it be possible to have one of staff come up for just a brief minute? Steve, this is a final development plan we're looking at tonight. Engineering at some time or other has looked at elevations on this site and obviously approved the elevation for the dentist's store. When will engineering look at the elevations on these two buildings?
There are two opportunities to look at those elevations. The first one is with this final development plan. However, a grading plan was not submitted with the application. The second opportunity comes with the application for the building permit.
When he has a concern about a retention pond, that's also something engineer reviews before it's ever built, if I'm not mistaken. If you could just explain that process, this would be engineered to design to run down to another one, to another one, down to the river. Is an overflow of that, should that be a concern for Doug?
No, that's correct. Apparently, the stormwater detention within this subdivision is kind of shared, and that there is some collection from adjacent properties that is also served by this property. I don't, I wasn't involved in those calculations. Perhaps the developer could respond to that question. I do know that they will, in order to get their building permit, have to resolve any issues that are related to shared stormwater detention from the subdivision.
They are not allowed to run off more water onto the neighbor's property than currently...
That currently runs off, and, you know, with the berm there, there's currently no runoff.
Hopefully, we can make Doug, put Doug at ease that some of his concerns are things that are also a concern at City Hall and regulated and double-checked. I don't know, apparently, he was under the impression that there was going to be a certain elevation when that dentist's office was built, but obviously, that wasn't the case.
At the time that the subdivision was put together, there was a subdivision plan that included grade lines, and that could be looked at again, I suppose. And I'm sure it will be looked at again when they get their building permit. Since that time, however, grading, changes to the grading plan of the preliminary subdivision plan do not go through the planning office or come back to you for review and approval, because you did look at the subdivision plan when it was first came through. So we were not aware, and you would not be aware of any changes to that grading plan that were made since then. That would have to be reviewed by the developer and the city engineer and see if everything...
In other words, if he has a concern about that, he can take that to another level.
Right, right.
Engineering, I suspect. Thank you, Stephen.
Again, Kenny, I appreciate those comments, because ultimately, we're here to look at the land use and is it an appropriate land use? And I do want the neighbors to know that there are city departments that can help him, and the Van Buskers have a history of working with their neighbors as well as the city. So I would encourage you, Doug, to pursue it a little more, just to get a little further clarification on your questions as well. But what we're here to decide tonight is that, is this the proper land use for this parcel of land? So again, I'll look for commission action on item number 10.
Well, I'd move for approval of item number 10 with, was there any restrictions on that, Madam Chair?
One condition. For signage. For signage.
With the, one stipulation?
Is there, there's been a motion. Is there a second? I have a motion and second in favor of item number 10. Is there any further discussion?
I would like to say I've been on this long enough, I remember when the Van Buskers bought this piece of property. And at that time, there was talk of putting an apartment building up there, a rather large one that I remember. I think they were designing some underground parking, and I knew that was a concern. I think the Van Buskers come back with the plan that we currently see today. I just happened to have driven through there today just to kind of take a look at the site. And I think some of the things they're doing there are really, really outstanding, Doug. I know there might be some frustration on your part having a dentist's office there, but an alternative to that from commercial to residential, that's typically multifamily or office, I think this would be a better neighbor for you, kind of in the long run, if you can kind of get a few of your issues kind of straightened away. So I'm going to support it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of item number 10 signify by saying yes?
Yes, yes.
Opposed, same sign? Item number 10 carries. Item number 11 and 12 have been deferred. Item number 13 is a conditional use permit.
Item 13, excuse me, is a conditional use permit. The applicant is Don Dunham Jr., who is also the current owner of the property. What we have is a request for a retail, trade, and service use approval, is the use that you're looking at. That is to allow retail, trade, and service as a commercial recreation facility in the I-1 Light Industrial District. Rezoning has been approved by the City Council this week, Monday night, for the subject property to I-1 Light Industrial, as well as a subdivision plan for the subject property. It's not effective yet, so in effect, if we approve the conditional use permit tonight for this proposal, it will have to depend on the effective date of the rezoning towards the end of the month. To the north of the subject property, we have C-4 Planned Commercial. To the south, it is I-1 Light Industrial. To the east, it's R-2 Residential, as currently rezoned to that zoning district. And to the west, it's C-4 in the Dugan PD, and also I-1 in this Williams addition. We've given it a compatibility rating of four, simply because of the retail nature of the traffic and the use of the property. Considerable activity there that is next to future industrial development, as well as future commercial and residential development. With a compatibility of rating of four, we're looking at the traffic from a higher density being directed away from lower intensity uses, and the building elements and scale being consistent with the surrounding proposed and existing developments. The applicant is proposing to make the property available in the Williams addition for development of a domed recreation facility, as shown on the plan submitted. A 30-foot-high, two-story gym building with lockers... A 30-foot-high, two-story gym building with lockers, training room, conference rooms, offices, and support spaces is attached to two athletic domes, 74 feet high, one being 240 feet by 500 feet in size, and the other being 250 feet by 500 feet. By definition, the recreation facility, commercial, is a bit owned and, uh, is a business and open to the public for a fee. As a retail, trade, and service, uh, it is an established implement engaged in providing services or entertainment to the general public, and also health and professional services. For retailing, retailing would be an allowed use within the, uh, the building, and should be designed in a fashion that minimizes the large amount of parking required on the site. And these uses are encouraged to provide a safe and convenient pedestrian circulation pattern, uh, through the parking lot. Further, such uses will be encouraged to develop an attractive sign package. Accessibility is from a private road that is included in the subdivision plan that was approved by the, um, city council. Venture Place, a private road shared with adjacent future commercial and residential development. There are no proximities to schools or parks or open space to be considered, and it's a flat site with no substantial natural vegetation to be preserved. Front yard setbacks are indicated as 25 feet from South Grange Avenue, 31 to 32 feet to the building from Venture Place, and 15 feet to parking from Venture Place roadway easement, and less than 20 feet to the building in the side yard. Staff notes that the required front yard setback from Venture Place private roadway is 25 feet. However, the applicant has gone to the Board of Adjustment and received a approval of a reduction of setback requirements. They also received a variance in the heights requirements to go to 75 feet. Parking, the applicant has calculated required parking is 135 spaces, and they're providing, uh, excuse me, 135 spaces for the gym and 163 spaces for the domes, for a total of 298 spaces, and their site plan indicates 404 spaces being provided. The building project is located on the south two-thirds of the property. There's a landscaping plan that addresses the requirements of street frontage of 2,163 feet, and there are 40 trees planted in the front yard setbacks. Five trees are shown to be planted elsewhere on the property, for a total of 45 trees. A minimum, uh, staff notes that a minimum of 43 trees are required in the front yard setback. A total of 67 trees on the property are required, as calculated by parking that's provided. So we'll have to address that in the conditions for approval. Also, a fence, wall, berm, or shrubbery four foot in height and a character necessary for adequate screening of the parking lot from the adjacent residential zoned use must be provided, and we'll address that in the conditions for approval. For a signage plan, the zoning ordinance limits freestanding signage along South Grange and the I-1 to 100 square feet in, uh, sign area and 18 foot in height. We did not have a, a sign plan to look at this evening. Lighting, uh, is not indicated on the site plan, and they will also have to address the zoning ordinance requirements for lighting next to a residential zoning district and use. A photometric plan, along with their building permit. Trash enclosure is not indicated on the site plan. They'll also have to meet that requirement, and we'll address that in conditional use requirements. Uh, the fire department has indicated that if the occupant load is 500 or more, or 100 above the level of discharge, fire alarm is required. They'll take care of that with the building permit. Petitions to rezone the subject property have been approved by the city council on October 3rd. On September 20th, uh, the Board of Adjustment did approve the setback variances, and, uh, the allowed heights to go to 75 feet. Because the application has provided clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent of the work proposed, and requires a complete plan check by zoning and light and building services prior to getting a building permit, staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit with the following stipulations, and I have indicated, uh, a total of five stipulations there, and I'll read each one. First one is provide one tree for every 18 interior parking spaces. Every interior tree shall be located in a planting island entirely within the hard surface area utilized for parking and maneuvering purposes. Said island shall have dimensions of at least five feet wide and contain a memo of 36 square feet per tree. Planting islands shall utilize raised curves or wheel stops necessary to prevent damage from vehicles. I say that because this is a quote, excuse me, a quote out of the zoning ordinance requirements, um, but in effect, it is a requirement now, if passed, of this conditional use permit, and would not be considered for a variance. The second one, fence, wall, berm, or shrubbery four feet in height and over character necessary for adequate screening of a parking lot from adjacent residentially-used property shall be provided. And I say that because, uh, they've reduced their front yard setback to 15 feet, and if there are concerns for easements, utility easements, uh, and so on, that that will have to be addressed in the nature of the screening. Probably, a wall would have to go in. Uh, in the past, we've allowed that wall to be defined as a solid screen wall, subject to a description in the zoning ordinance. If you would like to, uh, go further with a description of that wall, you would have to do that this evening. Item three, all outside dumpsters or other garbage or recycling receptacles or any outdoor storage which requires screening on the site shall be screened by an opaque fence or wall a minimum of six feet in height. The fourth condition, provide a site plan indicating the location of all outdoor lighting fixtures on the premises, and a photometric plan that conforms to the city zoning ordinance standards for outdoor lighting. And finally, uh, condition number five, freestanding signage is limited to a maximum 100 feet sign area and 18 feet in height at each street frontage. I received a call from the applicant, uh, who said that they would be represented here this evening to address any questions about the report or the conditions for approval. And that concludes staff report.
Steve, can you, where is the residential in relation to this?
Uh, I did not include, uh, the rezoning that went to the council Monday night, but it's located to the northeast corner of the subject property.
And is, are these apartments, or what is there?
Uh, it's vacant ground right now, but they are requesting zoning for, uh, a density of RA-2, which would be 1,000 square foot per unit, and it's a, if I remember right, it's a 20-acre site, so it's, it's a pretty big piece of property.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair? Okay, Dave, Dave has drawn a circle around it. Oh, that's not 20 acres, that's, that's got to be more like five acres.
Okay.
Madam Chair, Steve, I'm trying to picture what this is going to look like in my mind. I, I want to think of the golf dome, which is, I believe, still being used for golf and, and a, a fitness center. Uh, we're talking that type of building, with two of them. Do you know who the ultimate user of this is, or...
I do not, and the applicant would have to address that.
Well, we'll ask him. Okay. Thank you.
I'm going to go back to the fencing. I, I have a little bit problem trying to figure out what we're screening, because there's no way to hide these two big white domes.
No, it's the parking lot, it's the parking lot that would require the screening.
See, my question is, we have to screen the parking lot when you're going to have these two huge domes that are clearly evident from, the logic's not following for me, but... Okay.
Three tall feds.
Any other questions, Steve? Thank you, Steve. Is the petitioner here, please?
Madam Chairperson, members of the commission, my name is Damian Grebel. I'm with Earhart Griffin &amp; Associates, 300 North Dakota Avenue, Suite 114, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, 57104, and I'll be representing the applicant tonight. The applicant apologizes for not being here. Um, the applicant is aware of the five stipulations for recommendation for approval on this conditional use permit. Uh, this is a conditional use permit. Quite honestly, we're here for a conditional use permit because this type of use is not written into the current zoning ordinances of the city of Sioux Falls. So in working with city staff and planning, um, we developed a plan on how to develop this property, how to develop this use on this property, and that brings us here tonight in front of you for a conditional use permit. Again, uh, Mr. Dunlap had asked for elevations or something that, what the building would look like. The applicant did provide me with two pictures that I'd like to share with you as well, similar to what you have, but this would be a, uh, elevation, uh, of the building and the dome structures behind it as well. Um, and then there's another, uh, picture here, and northwest aerial type view, uh, of the development also. Um, in regards to the screening, uh, Madam Chairperson, you made a very good point. Uh, there's no way we're going to hide these domes, uh, from anybody, uh, but it is written into the ordinance, uh, that screening, uh, should be maintained for parking between, um, this type of zone and residential zone. I, all that I ask is that our options are left open, uh, for the developer to, uh, to provide that screening, as stated in number two. So, I would just ask that he is given these options, uh, different types of screening as well. Other than that, I don't have anything else to add, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have tonight.
The road then on the right side of the dome, is that the 49th Street when that goes through?
That would be Grange Avenue.
Oh, that's Grange, okay.
That's Grange, uh, 49th Street would be behind the domes.
Okay. So, Damian, we need to screen to the, as it stands now, to the east?
Um, just a portion of the east.
Okay, just along that east side parking lot would be it, right? Do you have to, just the parking lot, or do you have to screen all the way to the dome? Beyond the dome?
Just the parking, yeah, just the parking, yep.
Madam Chair? Damian, what are these buildings going to be used for? Is, is this going to be a furniture store?
I, I believe they're going to be used for athletics, so, um, I believe one would have an indoor track, uh, in there. As I understand, they're just in the tri-state areas. Um, yeah, another one would have basketball courts, uh, ability for football, again, track and field, football, soccer, uh, events of that nature.
Thank you for sharing that with us.
Are the white things moving down here?
I have no idea.
Any other questions, Damian? Thank you, Damian.
Thank you.
Is anybody from the audience here to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll request commission action on item number 13.
Madam Chair, I make a recommendation for approval of item 13 with the five stipulations.
I'll second that. We have a motion and approval for item number 13. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, it looks like a pretty exciting adventure, a, uh, I think it'll be fun. Yeah, I'm certainly going to support it. I hope everybody else is, too.
I think it fits the other golf domes not that far, and it's a pretty commercial area, so... Okay. Any other further discussion? All those in favor of item number 13 signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Oppose, same sign. Item number 13 carries. Thank you. Item number 14.
Item 14 is also a conditional use permit, and it's located at Minnesota Crossings, uh, which is a location that is on the edge of town. South Minnesota Avenue and East 85th Street at the intersection with the new Highway 100 that would be coming across there. Uh, it may be a while before that highway gets constructed over that direction, but 85th and Minnesota, I'm sure will become a, a major intersection, uh, probably about the same time. Uh, the city's identified it as a location for a regional employment center, what we call a regional employment center, that would allow a higher, uh, end uses for commercial, larger commercial buildings and so on. However, there is an existing development there, the Sioux, um, uh, Sports Facility, which is a retail outlet for, uh, Sioux Sports, and also a location for their storage area and sales area, outdoor displays and so on. That was approved for, uh, development by conditional use, uh, a while back, and if you've driven out there, you can see the landscaping and the type of building that went in. The applicant would like to do a similar type development, including outdoor storage, uh, but they want to add retail or commercial storage, rental units type, and then also what they describe as a flex building. The flex building being something that would accommodate office, retail, uh, accessory storage for those uses in larger buildings that would, uh, be rented out, multi-tenant type spaces. It's a four-and-a-half acre site, so, uh, they've provided a site plan for overall development that would be, uh, constructed in phases. The first phase of development would be the commercial storage units, rental storage units, uh, for typically personal storage, but, uh, the petitioner can, has a description for that type of storage. There are a couple of different types of storage in there, the rental units that would be included, some with services, some without. And, uh, that's located in the south, um, corner of the site, uh, that's along the west edge of the property. In Phase 1, they would provide access to that development, put a fence around it, screen fence, and is willing to provide, uh, additional screening along the highway as indicated on the plan in front of you. That's the location of evergreen trees, it's kind of a staggered spacing, double row, uh, that they feel would adequately screen the outdoor storage as well as the storage units in the buildings themselves. There is a site, stormwater detention pond that's located on the property that they've, they've shown where the screening, uh, of those evergreen trees now comes up against the building, the larger buildings that they're proposing, uh, in order to provide some variety in depth, uh, to the site, coming along the highway and looking at the buildings from the highway side. They've also provided the additional tree planting requirements required by street frontage, uh, along with that buffer zone of evergreen trees, on, along the highway and also along the interior street frontage. That's kind of a general overall description of the project. Phase 2 would be the flex buildings and the required parking for those. We've indicated the required parking based on, uh, square footage, uh, multi-tenant buildings, 1 to 200. The applicant would like to propose to you this evening an alternate calculation method for those buildings that would consider the fact that they're providing accessory storage for the users or the tenants within those buildings. And that's not unusual for our Building Services Department to enter into those kinds of discussions with a developer, if they know exactly what, uh, how much of the building is going to be used for storage, then they're willing to consider the parking requirements reduced for that portion of the building. However, for you this evening, we do not know, uh, according to the plan, what those percentages are. The applicant, who'll explain it to you, uh, would like to propose a percentage of the building being used for storage on which to calculate the parking. And then, they feel that they have provided then enough parking on the site to meet that requirement, or to meet that restriction of the use of the building. Uh, perhaps the applicant can explain that better than I just did, but, uh, that was my shot at it. We're looking at, uh, multiple uses on the property and multiple building sites on the property, so it's not an easy plan to review. I, I, I think that some flexibility is being asked for by the developer, and we're willing to concede that what the, what the staff would really like you to consider is, are they addressing, uh, the shapes Sioux Falls 2035 Plan requirements for, um, a gateway into the community? And by that, I, I, I would refer you to those sections of the report. We have those reports... We have those reports available on, for you to look at this evening, but I'm sure you're acquainted with them, that call for a higher level of design, higher level of landscaping, something that, you know, addresses community pride and at a high visibility location and entrance into the community. The applicant is proposing metal buildings, and they have provided some additional information for you to look at this evening that describes the character of the buildings, however, the exact design of those buildings has not been provided at this point. As I mentioned, there are two phases to the project. The first phase is the commercial rental units, which are pretty standard, and the applicant does have a design for those buildings to present to you this evening, but the best they can do in the larger buildings is show you similar types of buildings that they would like to provide in the future. If you are inclined to want to see exactly what those buildings look like, staff recommends that you approve only Phase One this evening, and then Phase Two would have to be approved in the future. Basically, without that information, staff is recommending denial of the application just because we approached the applicant and suggested that if they wanted to defer and spend some more time on the design of the buildings and the landscaping, they are welcome to do that, we would assist them with that, but they did want to, because of the construction season, approach you this evening with what they had. And so I'm going to defer to the applicant for the remainder of the presentation because they do have considerable additional material that they would like to show to you, and then ask for your permission to get started. But that's basically it. The staff at this point has recommended denial because of the compatibility issues with shaped Sioux Falls and the 2035 Plan for a gateway into the community and a regional employment center that we would expect to develop around this highway intersection at 85 and South Minnesota Avenue. That concludes staff report.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions of Steve?
Madam Chair, probably last year, I'm trying to think, we approved a neighborhood storage project. And I think at the time, it was rather a, a little bit of a new thought, a new concept, but I think staff was fairly diligent about the construction. Think they required it be stick-built versus a metal building. Wanted a pitch roof, no outside storage, wrought iron fence, in other words, kind of a blending in to the, to the neighborhood. If they had approached you with that type of concept with this, with that, would it be fair to ask you, would that have made a difference from staff's viewpoint in this particular project? Or would you still have the same issue with the gateway to Sioux Falls?
I think staff is still concerned about the gateway situation into the community, but also because of the comprehensive plan that calls for a regional employment center here, which storage rental units is not really addressing that type of use. Those are the kinds of uses we're looking for. Now, to go into a regional employment center, we look for no more than 50% of that, possibly 160 acres, being commercial. The rest of it could be residential, and being residential could include storage units, similar to the project you just described that we approved, which was compatible with residential design, was limited to personal storage, residential, no outdoor storage kind of things. Sure, we would be more than happy to consider that, but because of the proposed use at the location that they're proposing, we would still be suspect of the project. At first, we wanted to call it industrial because it does, it is open to commercial tenants, and according to our zoning ordinance, that would require an I-1 type zoning.
How long has this neighborhood, I'm trying to think, business center, I think, as you described it? How long has that been designated for this particular area? When did that go into effect?
Since the adoption of this plan that you see on the, on the slide in front of you.
Is there a date on? That's your 2035 plan?
December of 2009.
Okay. Thank you, Steve.
Any additional questions of Steve? Thank you, Steve. Mr. Van Buskirk.
I'd like to thank Steve and the commission for hearing us out again, and not used to recommendations for denial, but like to address the issues according to it and see if maybe we can put everybody's apprehensions at ease, but, uh, point out two things, I guess, just from Steve's comments, a sub-regional employment center, which is kind of neither here nor there, I guess, as far as the land use according to that. December 2009 was after Sioux Sports was put in there. It was completed in January 210, so it was actually after we had the zoning for that and conditional use for that property, which was based on, conditional use, I believe, at that point was just based on the fact that it was over one acre of site being disturbed, so just a little background there. I guess, well, like I say, recommended for denial, so I'd just like to go through a couple of reasons I think it is compatible with the neighborhood and does comply with the ordinance. One, the size of the lots down there, we've got, and part of the use, a big part of that is what we've done with Sioux Sports already there. It's, it's got similar uses to a use, well, it's a vehicle sales lot is what it is. They sell new and used boats. They have a service department there. We've got six bays in behind that building on the east side of the property. We bought and developed all five of these lots that you see there on the south side of 85th Street now, primarily with the function of it being to get Sioux Sports a new spot because they had to move primarily for the city off of the 49th right-of-way, which is coming, 49th Street right-of-way, which is coming through Western Avenue, so this was our new site. In order to get the land bought, we are bordered on the south side by Highway 100 right-of-way that'll be future sometime, we don't know when. Put this plan together, work with Sioux Sports, got their plan in place and their building in place with, like I say, basically a retail boat sales location, so to, in our mind, in our uses of the land and as developers and owners of this property, that kind of sets the tone for the property, we believe, and we feel like we're complying with the tone that is set there. If you could show Sioux Sports again, I'd appreciate it, Steve. Very proud of that project there. We think it sets nicely, and probably doesn't comply with the sub-regional employment center. There's, you know, maybe 10, 12 people employed in that building, and it's a large site. They've got almost four acres, I believe, there, so a lot of it is site work, a lot of it is storage, and that's the conditions that are set. So that being said, we're trying to maximize the land as best we can. If you go back to the subdivision plan again, too, you can see that we've not chosen our 85th or Minnesota Avenue frontage, but yet, but rather buried a little bit back in the lot, if you will, because we understand the suspect of the use there. It's going to be a neighborhood amenity, we feel. There's a lot of higher-end homes to the north and west of this area, but we are also on the very south end of the city, so that said, we're backed up to a highway coming in the future as well. We went through efforts on the architectural plan to screen our highway. I don't know if you've seen there also, but I wanted to point out another example on I-229, back one. Right there, that's off the exit of 229 heading west to Louise Avenue, and that looks directly north. If we're talking about gateways to the city, I don't know of a busier intersection of the city than Louise Avenue and 229 getting to the mall there, maybe 41st Street. I guess I can't tell you exactly when that went in, but Vern ID's not very old on that site there. Got some nice trees screening it. I can commend it in the way that it is screened, which is what we're planning on doing, and actually we proposed more trees than what they're showing there. We did propose shorter trees, which is another objection in the staff review, but our anticipation is we more than tripled the amount of trees required on the frontage for the highway frontage there, and the reason for that is we'd like it to be well-screened, and we like city of Sioux Falls to present well. And we also realize it's probably 10, 15, maybe 20 years down the road before Highway 100 gets in, so we're proposing smaller trees, but more of them in the anticipation that, of course, they'll grow. And talking to our landscaper, we expect him to grow a foot plus a year for an evergreen type tree along that frontage, so. Right now, I don't know if I have the pictures of the, or the aerial of the current, but we've got ag land to the south of us, right up through Highway 100, right there's looking south, and that pipeline marker there is just the west edge of the property that we're discussing tonight, but as you can see, you can, if you were tall enough, you could see the Harrisburg there, so we've got a ways to go. So the size of the lots, the current usage, the screening that we've done and met and exceeded, we've got 52 trees versus 16, so like I say, more than triple. The current use of Sioux Sport, we think we're certainly congruent with what's going on there. Beyond that, you know, neighbors, Sioux Sports certainly knows what's going on there. To the south of Highway 100, there's a rock and landscaping retail outlet there, but they have, you know, raw materials behind their property, and they have a steel building there now, too. I don't know if that'll be, maybe staff can address that, too. I don't know if that's actually going to be in the right-of-way, Highway 100, and have to be moved later, but there is a steel building there now with RV-type storage there also just to the south of this site. The remaining lots we have there, as far as neighbor goes, of course, as I mentioned, we, we bought and developed that, rest of that land, so the rest of the lots are ours. We'll be doing the sales and presentation, and obviously it'll be clear what's going to be there for use now, so there's no misconception of what's going on there. Based on the other conditions of, and as far as going to the industrial, we did talk about that with, with staff, planning, planning staff, and again, seasonal, seasonality was a bit of an issue. If we could go to I-1, it would be easier, and we wouldn't be here for conditional use other than the over one acre usage, but looking at other uses that are allowed under conditional uses in C-4, I see commercial parking lots, motor vehicle sales, display and rental, parking ramps, recycling processing facilities, and motor vehicle repair shops, and I think certainly we're not too far off the mark on those kind of uses that are allowed, and I'm just backing the C-4 zoning, zoning book, which is not in your staff report, but here. So we're proud of what we do with Sioux Sports down there. I have no doubt we're going to be proud of what we're going to do with the mini-storages down there. You'll also see us on the south side of the site. The Phase Two, which if we're talking about just Phase One tonight, that's okay, too, and we don't have our plans fully developed for Phase Two. We do feel there's a need for, we're in that, we're all along 85th Street, and we've had other people approach us looking for these retail-type outlets with some ancillary storage to back them up. A lot of people have product that they need to keep, you know, on hand and near, and they would like a nice office space that shows well, but also need some storage, so I think there is a need for that in Sioux Falls, and again, we've, we want to increase and maximize the value of our other property that's there, too, so we don't intend on putting something up that's going to depreciate our own interest there, certainly. And then staff report again, addressing those. We do meet, and then I'll just show you some pictures after that, so if you bear with me one more moment. The conditional use standards, I believe we've met those as well. 15.59.310, outdoor storage. Outdoor storage shall be placed in a lot such that as not detracting from the appearance of the area, the impact of outdoor storage might be minimized through screening, fence, berm, or vegetation. We've indicated an opaque fence on the west side of the property. Along that, and that right-of-way that's shown there is actually that pipeline right-of-way, too, so we're trying to maximize and use that space. There's an opaque fence indicated on that plan, maybe you can see it better in your packets, but on the west side there. On the south side, obviously, again, we discussed the trees, and these storage buildings are going to be relatively short. Evergreens, as we all know, get very relatively tall, so we think that Vern ID is a good example of where the impact has worked. The second conditional use standard that I believe we met, there's four of them listed here, 15.59.348 is retail warehouse, compatible with neighborhood character and site design in such a way to minimize our impact on adjacent residential uses. Well, we have no residential uses here. We think we are compatible with Sioux Sports. Finally, warehouse mini-storage, it just, you know, that's an easy one. It says we've got to go with no toxic or explosive materials, and obviously that's not the intention, and have to go by the Fire Marshal Service, so that one we certainly will comply with. Beyond that, I think probably the last objection that maybe I can address ahead of time is the shaped Sioux Falls compliance, and again, to me, that goes back to gateway to the city. We've got a gravel pit along I-29, we've got 10th Street along I-29, we've got Vern ID along 229. There's plenty of examples around where I think they haven't gone to the effort of what we're going to here to shield the traveling public from what might be perceived as a lesser use. So that concludes my comments. Glad to answer any questions.
Any questions, Chad?
Oh, we've got all kinds of questions, Chad. Chad, it went pretty, pretty well for you earlier this evening. That one went right sailing through.
Well, I'm trying to, trying to make a second run at it. We'll see if we can do two for two here.
Just a couple of comments. I, I know you have visited with staff a lot this last month, and I think staff tries to look at things, how things are going to look 10, 15, 30 years down the road, so a lot of the times, the decisions they make are tough and can be controversial. Get a lot of good arguments. Some of the things you're talking about are some things that happened a long time ago. You talk about a gravel pit and some of these other things, and if we'd had a plan back then, like we have now, might, might not be seeing that same thing. I kind of get the impression that staff maybe did you a favor back when you did Sioux Sports. And I've been by it, I think it's outstanding-looking building. I think you were fortunate to get that particular customer, and I'm sure that's a site they wanted, and maybe staff looked at that a little differently than they're looking at this. I wish you could have been with us a couple of months ago when we talked about a storage facility on, on not a location like this. They become awfully sensitive deals to future tenants, future homeowners around you. I realize you'd be the first one in there, and that should put those people at ease, but we went on for hours talking about outside storage and such. I'm not sure how anybody else feels, outside storage is not something I could feel comfortable supporting, and, but I just want to tell you that straight up, I guess, staff would have to come back to me after sitting down with you with a plan that they could feel comfortable with for me to kind of go and, go against staff on this particular one.
If I may, I'll, I'll address you back, too, on the outside storage. The only outside storage we've, outside storage we've actually indicated on, on that westernmost building, and that would be with the intent of, those garage doors would face towards the west and have one stall in front of them, the idea being that we can actually play off Sioux Sports there, they'd store their boat inside, and then they've still got a vehicle perhaps outside, but any kind of permanent storage, anything like that, it's not going to lend itself to because they wouldn't be able to get into their space behind it, but the intention was that we would give that space in front of that because we've got to have such a deep stall in front of it to be able to pull a truck in and back it into the space, that we would offer that up as an amenity for those spaces in particular. The rest of the site is not indicated for any outdoor storage, other than those parking stalls right along that, looks like maybe 12 or 14 spots there on that western building, so just want to clarify that.
Maybe I was a little confused. It's a comment we get about some of the other storage places, one man's treasure is another man's junk.
Of course.
And that's sometimes a nice word.
Again, you know, we're going to screen that, and we don't want to detriment to our own property there, certainly, and, you know, we are in a commercial district as opposed to residential district. You know, the closest residential would be across 85th Street and at the closest, depending on how that develops out, which is, right now, it's, I don't know that it's zoned or annexed to the city actually yet, but it wouldn't be visible to anything north of 85th.
Do you own the land to the east of this?
We don't. Highway 100 borders us on the east, and then it's agricultural after that, but, you know, residential backing up to Highway 100, I would say, probably unlikely as well, so. But thank you for your comments.
No.
Hopefully you didn't sway anybody else.
No, I, I'd have a real tough time, I, and I know metal is less expensive than wood, but I, I think of some of the other deals that, that we put on people for storage, I can see that particular individual coming right back and going, hey, I want my metal building now, too. And that's what we sometimes wrestle with. I hope you can appreciate that.
No, I certainly do, and, you know, we understand, there's objections. In this case, we're far enough out, we think we're going to circumvent those objections, hopefully, and set the, set the tone for the, you know, for the development, which we did. And I guess I take a little objection that we're, as far as doing us a favor, I guess, as far as Sioux Sports goes, I think it's a perfectly appropriate use down there. And if you head down Minnesota Avenue, you get further north, you know, it's, there's some more office-type uses up there, too, but in that case, the city had a stake in it as well, too, because they had to get 49th Street vacated, so maybe there was some accommodation there, but just the same, you know, if we do that and we, I can't go stick a high-priced office building in behind Sioux Sports, I just can't.
I noticed at Sioux Sports, part of their storage is fenced, part of it isn't, and I, you know, I don't know if that was a discussion back at the time that was approved, or...
I have a couple of shots there, we can show that, actually. Both of them are fenced, they actually, and I don't know, this fence there...
I guess I'm talking about the green lattice.
Right, the privacy slats, and I was going to address... Right, the privacy slats, and I was going to address that right here. This one is their westernmost, they've got two separate lots. There's a double entry into the site, so this one is their westernmost. That, we did not install actually with the original project, so I assume they got a fencing permit, and I can't address how or why that was allowed to go without screening, if that's the case. The western lot, which I think I have a picture of that also, Steve, that one we did install originally, and that includes, you know, their service area more, so the used boats and boats that are in for service are behind that screening there, and you can see kind of off the left there, too, is actually their maintenance bays there, but that was all screened, and that was the original installation. The secondary fence went in 12, 14, 16 months later, I'm not sure, after we finished the building. We haven't found a concern for us yet, otherwise, you know, we might be the ones complaining about that as well, but we haven't gotten down there yet either, so.
Thank you, Steve. Any additional questions of Steve?
That'd be me, Chad.
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 It's getting really close to my bedtime.
That's quite all right.
How we get you brothers confused sometimes.
Yes, there's a few of us, so.
You've been called worse things, I'm sure.
I have.
My apologies.
Not a problem.
Any additional questions of Chad? Thank you, Chad. Anybody from the audience have additional comments? Okay. So I'll look for commission action on item number 14.
I'd move for approval of item 14.
And I'll look for a second.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on item number 14?
But that, I gotta, we're voting on approval of the denial, or the approval...
No. He's voting for approval of item number 14.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second for approval.
I'm going to withdraw my second.
Okay.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and approval for item number 14. Is there any discussion?
I made the motion, but, and I know Chad and your family, and I know you're working, and we need this sort of stuff. I gotta listen to staff on this one, Chad, and I don't want that to, you know, upset you guys. Hopefully, you can sit back down with staff in the next, you know, get something worked out for spring.
I'm sorry, the discussion is closed.
Okay. Well, I was going to suggest maybe follow staff's comments, which is, if Phase One is acceptable, perhaps we could do that, but yes, no, I'm not upset.
Good.
Sorry, you're good.
That's okay. Any additional comments?
I, too, have to agree with what staff said about this being a gateway to the city and a regional employment center. It just doesn't feel right to me, I'm not comfortable with that, I'm sorry. I understand your dilemma.
Thank you. Anything else additional?
Would we, I mean, is there an option to go to another motion after this if we wanted to discuss further approving Phase One?
We could.
You can amend the main motion with a different, with either an amendment to it or, you know, a different motion, so you'd have to make an amendment, you'd have to make a motion to amend and get a second on whatever your motion is then.
Yes, I want to talk to Steve a little more before that happened, though I didn't know if we could do that or not.
I would have questions for Steve before then.
Oh, you can call it this.
Okay. Question for Steve, I mean, is that something you would be in favor of, or would you prefer denial and move forward next month?
Well, I think the main objection from staff had to do with the nature of the design of the unit in both phases.
Okay. Thanks.
There's just one point of clarification, too. If you do deny it, he can't reapply for six months on the conditional use permit, so. Just for your consideration.
Madam Chair, I ask a question of Ken.
Sure.
You're talking to a Swede, he doesn't understand a lot of things, okay? Are you asking us to vote to approve the Van Busker presentation or to approve the denial that the staff has presented before?
Maybe I can clarify this. There is a motion and a second for approval of this item, okay? So, if you think this motion should go through, then you would vote in the affirmative. If you think that the motion should be denied, then all those, so those in favor would signify by saying yes, okay? Those opposed would have the same sign. So you would be opposed if you do not want...
So, let's assume for a moment that we voted down Ken's motion, and then are we back to disapproval or denial of the original, or has it been denied?
You have a second, you have a second motion, you're on the original.
Right. The motion is what the motion is.
I know.
The motion is to...
And if it fails, then it's a denial.
Then it's done.
Then it's done, all right. I just want to be sure about that.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? So we have a motion and a second for approval of item number 14. All those in favor of approval, and I'm going to look for a show of hands as well, signify by saying yes, and a show of your hands. Okay. All those opposed, same sign.
Yes.
And a show of hands, okay. So item number 14 is denied. Okay. Now look for a motion to adjourn.
No.
And a second?
Second.
Favor of adjournment, signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.